The March 25th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:07 PM. Who do we have here in the audience? Okay. So, I'm looking at the captains over there. I'm going to ask Captain Chris Port to give the invocation today and we will be led in the pledge allegiance by Captain Ning. You can do it from there, sir. Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that.
I want to give thanks for allowing us to all be in good health and be here today to enjoy this meeting and hopefully a lot of city business is accomplished in a professional and collaborative manner. And with that, I say amen.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Let's recognize our veterans in the process. So, if you're a current or former military, you can do an appropriate salute. Thank you.
Place your hands on your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you guys all for being here. I did receive two or three calls about some city business from residents. We'll make sure to return those after this meeting. And if there's anything that you need to say about certain things that you reached out to me about, you can always communicate through oral communications, but if you can also give me or my city council member colleagues an opportunity to assist you first, that would be much appreciated. Okay, so we have an item, which is a proclamation to be presented by Councilmember Reyes and myself on the Fair Housing Foundation's efforts.
Thank you so much, Martha. Thank you for coming and being here. On behalf of the City of Hawthorne, a proclamation fair housing is considered fair housing month this month, whereas one of the most foremost liberties afforded to Americans is the right to reside in a dwelling of their choosing. And I love just that first line alone. It goes on fairly long and I don't want to, you know, hold anyone up, but just let me just make mention here real quick that April is acknowledged as fair housing month nationwide and we encourage all residents of the City of Hawthorne to embrace the principles of freedom, justice, and equality in housing. Now, therefore, the City Council of Hawthorne, on behalf of its citizens, hereby proclaims April 2025 as fair housing month in the City of Hawthorne and encourages all residents to endorse its initiatives that promote fair and equitable housing for all proclaimed this day, the 25th day of March 2025. And I want to give an opportunity for the mayor to also say a few words.
We really thank you for all your efforts. We know that right now it's challenging times for those people who are looking for housing, especially those who are renters and so many challenges, especially, you know, all the rising costs and, you know, the lack of controls when it comes to people changing the, you know, the amounts of the rents and everything. So, it's groups like yours that can advocate for those who are less fortunate and are able to defend themselves legally. So, I want to really thank you and on behalf of myself, Councilmember Reyes English, and the community for everything you do. So, thank you so much.
Martha, can I please ask just to provide a couple of words with regards to the fair housing industry, obviously your entity, if you could just say a few words?
Of course. Thank you very much for having us tonight. The Fair Housing Foundation provides free fair housing services to the residents of Hawthorne. We are a nonprofit organization, so we are not pro landlord, we are not pro tenant. We're here to provide education on fair housing rights and responsibilities in order to abide by the law and preserve housing. We investigate housing discrimination complaints as well as counsel on landlord-tenant issues. We counsel approximately about four to 500 clients a month on their landlord-tenant rights. And then, we also have a very strong education and outreach program where we conduct free virtual and in-person workshops to educate both landlords and tenants on their housing rights. Now, more than ever, it's crucial to support our communities in protecting their housing rights. We are deeply grateful for the city's funding as well as the support from our city council members and dedicated city staff, which allow us to continue to provide these vital services to the residents of Hawthorne. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna go ahead and take a picture down. Yes, we're gonna take a picture here in the center. Can I ask Vaughn to take the picture with us and Kimberly from the Housing Department to come forward too? And if City Councilmember colleagues can join me here in the center horseshoe, please. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, Martha, for coming.
Thank you, Councilwoman. How many times when we get calls, we, you know, we don't know what to do and, you know, there's just limited things that we could do as council members and we want to make sure that our residents are assisted. But then also, like the lady just mentioned, it's the people who are, who own a property that are renting it to people who are irresponsible too. There's both sides. There's both sides of people who could get frustrated with the process. So, it's organizations like this that could really get to the bottom of things for, on behalf of people. Next, we have a proclamation to present by Councilmember Montero. You want to do that now, sir? Okay. And proclamation to honor Bob Jensen. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm gonna do the American Red Cross. Welcome the representative from the American Red Cross. Ken and your colleague can come to the podium, please. As you know, it's the American Red Cross Month and American Red Cross has been very instrumental in the light of the disasters that we had in LA and LA County, you know, at the Pacific Palisades and the Eaton Fire in Altadena. So, this reads, a proclamation for the American Red Cross. For over 140 years, the American Red Cross has functionally as a humanitarian organization guided by the principle of humanity, impartiality, and independence, providing assistance to individuals in need without regard of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or citizenship status. The American Red Cross responds to an average of more than 62,000 disaster each year, including 502 incidents in the Los Angeles County in 2024, which ranged from residential fires to significant disaster such as Hurricane Elaine Milton and well at the Pacific Palisades and Eaton Fire. And in response to the LA fire, the American Red Cross facilitate 18,239 overnight shelter stayed for 272 residents, documented 260,000 volunteer hours, and collaborate with various organizations to provide over 15,000 meals and snacks. The Great Long Beach and South Bay chapter served 493 clients, including 110 children, and enhanced community safety by educating 915 individuals on fire prevention while improved 193 households through the home fire campaign. And we here proclaim March as American Red Cross Month and encourage all residents to lend their support to this vital organization and its humanitarian mission. Proclaim this 25th day of March 2025. And signed by Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Catrila Many, Councilwoman English Reyes, Councilwoman Fay Johnson, and Councilmember Alex Montero. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Mayor and council members, thank you. We just really wanted to say how much we appreciate your support here in the City of Hawthorne. Our chapter does represent 29 cities and communities in Long Beach and the South Bay, the port of Long Beach, the port of LA, and Catalina Island. So, we are very busy. But I wanted to just remind you as the City Council and all badge-carrying personnel, I don't see anyone from FIRE here this evening. Is anyone? But reminding everyone in the city, specifically FIRE, so when you see your FIRE colleagues, remind them, we are here in your chapter, in your neighborhood, to respond on a daily basis to home fires. That is what we do. You read all of the things that we've done on a huge scale, but I wanted to remind you tonight that we specifically would love to hear from your FIRE department when they respond to a local home fire and deem that the home is not safe for the residents to come back to. The Red Cross team will come out in the middle of the night, no matter the day, no matter the time, and provide financial assistance and some basic comfort items, plus long-term recovery and support if they need it. And we want to get those calls. So, please, continue those calls coming in and we will continue to serve you. And just we wanted to say thank you again for all that you've done for us. And now, I'd like Kent Takata to say a few words and then another colleague, Ivan.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, community members, and the public. My name is Kent Takata. I'm actually from Hawthorne. As you know, I went to, you know, the elementary school here, what used to be Hawthorne Intermediate School and Hawthorne Middle School, Hawthorne High. My mother still lives here in Hawthorne. Just wanted to thank you for all of your support all the time. It's an honor for me to be the community volunteer leader for Hawthorne. You know, Amy was just talking about how the FIRE department responds. Actually, Ivan here, he was just on a call today. There was actually a fire two blocks away over on Truro and the house burned to the ground. He might talk a little bit more about it. But we do respond to fires in Hawthorne and disasters. I was actually on a call where a soffit had collapsed at an apartment building. That was maybe a month ago in Hawthorne. So, we're out here all the time, helping out with whatever we can. I want to, just want to give you a few little crazy statistics about the wildfires and what the Red Cross has been doing. So, the Red Cross has had over 20,000 stays in their shelters. That's just in their shelters, not including the hotels or anything, but just at the shelters. We have served over 170,000 meals. We have given out over 3,300 cleanup kits to the residents of, you know, the Palisades and the Eaton Fire up in, what do you call it?
Altadena.
Altadena, thank you. And then, over 200,000 other types of supplies, as well as there are 1,500 trained Red Cross volunteers across the county and the country that have come over to help out. So, we're proud that we were able to help with all of that. So, anyway, I thank you again for your support. And then, here's Ivan Contreras.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ivan Contreras. I am an AMERICOR member assigned to the American Red Cross in Long Beach, California. AMERICOR is a national service agency that mobilizes members through the country. Basically, it's a federal agency. And basically, they look to address community needs, which is what I'm doing now at the Long Beach chapter. Today, I responded to a fire here behind the water tower. And it was just very fulfilling to see the resident's face when we arrived, when she knew that she felt alone, but that help had finally arrived. And we were able to help her with some financial assistance and as well as Amy was saying, we do offer long-term recovery. So, we went ahead and opened up a case for her. So, basically, we just want the city to know that if there's any disaster, any fire, you know, we're on call 24/7. It doesn't matter the time or the day, if it's a holiday or not, we're always available to serve. For me, it is a privilege to serve as an aspiring lawyer who is committed to public service. It is a pleasure to be here today and I'm looking forward to helping any resident or anyone in the City of Hawthorne or anyone in our area, for that matter. So, thank you for your time and thank you for having us here.
Thank you, sir.
That's very impressive. So, we're gonna take a picture. So, you guys can come into the...
One quick thing I want to say was I really appreciate what you guys do, the American Red Cross. In some countries, the American Red Cross is the only trauma response organization. I remember when we were in Mexico, oh my God, I don't even know if I say, one of my siblings in Mexico, you know, we were staying with my grandpa visiting over the summer and she had accidentally put a razor blade, you know, the razors, you know, to like shave, in her mouth and it got stuck in there. So, we called the Red Cross, they took her, and they were able to extract that without, you know, my God, you know, big, big danger. So, those are my memories of the Red Cross and I really appreciate what you do in those cases and what you're ready to do for us here. God willing, we won't have those, a need for, to implement your services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
All right. So, if I can have the Bob Jensen families and friends and colleagues to the podium, please. So, until, I'm going to try to read this because, you know, Bob Jensen used to be a great, great leader for the city. And in his last days, he was continued to be the president of the Hawthorne Historic Society. So, Bob passed away and I just wanted to, we want to give this proclamation to the family. Proclamation to Bob Jensen. Mr. Bob Jensen was born in Cover City in 1953 while his family resided in the great Hawthorne area, specifically within the Del Air Track, and attended local education institution culminating in his graduation from the Hawthorne High in 1971. Mr. Bob Jensen acquired foundational work experience in his family's music store situated at the...
On behalf of all the people behind me, we thank you. Bob had two, two things that he really liked a lot. One was learning. He loved to learn things, and he loved Hawthorne. So when the opportunity came up for him to be member of the Historical Society, then he could learn about Hawthorne, and he was just a really happy camper with that. And he loved the city so much, and tonight, I got a taste of, well, I actually got a physical taste of Hawthorne, but I got a mental taste of what Hawthorne's like, and it's a very spread-out place, but it's a very hometown vibe that I caught here. And he talked about that a lot, how comfortable it was, how it needed to be honored, that the history needed to be honored. And he knew the history. I don't know where he found it all, but he knew it, he loved it, he loved the museum. If anybody here is not familiar with the museum, please go visit it. It's pretty unique, and there's probably wonderful things in attics and mothers and fathers, older people in town that have paper. Paper always just gets thrown out. There's probably some really interesting old papers that the museum would like. So here I am, taking his place, saying, please help us with the museum. So thank you for the proclamation.
To the chair.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. To Mr. Jensen's family, my condolences, and I just want to just commend all the work that he did, and on behalf of the city of Hawthorne, just through, you know, the various events we hosted over at the Ayers Hotel, just having guest speakers over at the museum in participation of just everything that is Hawthorne, and his love to just serve. And so I just want to acknowledge that, and thank Councilmember Montero for bringing this to the council so that he could be acknowledged with good and well-intent, because he was a good man and served the city well.
Yes, he put in a lot of work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for those words. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Well, okay.
To the chair.
Mr. Mayor Protem is going to say something.
So I just want to say my condolences, and also thank you, Montero, for bringing us to city council. I had the opportunity to go there, and I'm automatic renewal for being a member there. And you guys are really, really good with your newsletters, and just being able to go there and see a lot of stuff that Hawthorne did. It was really inspiring, and it was really fun, so I appreciate all the hard work. Just seeing that Russell, I think it's Russell Westbrook, was a part of City of Hawthorne, and he went to high school, and so now when I'm in a community or other communities, that's one of the things that I brag about, saying all of the celebrities that were a part of City of Hawthorne. I let other people know, but going to the museum was the way I found out a lot of things that I didn't know. So thank you guys so much for being here today. Also, continue the work, and I promise you, I will continue to be part of the Historical Society, and thank you so much to the family for coming, and we appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
This is his sister, Kathy.
Oh, thank you, Kathy.
I was his husband, and all of these people are, I think, you're all Historical Society and museum people, so.
I remember the young lady, I think, with the dark hair, back when I came over.
Even though he's not here, there's a whole team ready to step up, so.
Well, thank you guys so much. Thank you.
My condolences as well. To the chair. Pam, can you mention about April nineteenth, please?
Yes, thank you, council members. On April nineteenth, the family and friends would like to have a celebration of life and remembrance for Bob, and it's going to be on that Saturday at the Memorial Center. We are planning to have just a short activity going on. The specific time has not yet been announced, but it will be a late morning type of an event. The public is welcome to attend, and we thank you, Mr. Montero, for your assistance with us being able to have the venue, to be able to present this, and recognize the good work that Bob has done for the city of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we go picture time. Celebrate one.
here to the center? And we'd like to take a picture with you guys, and we really appreciate. Can you say something real brief before we go down? Real brief, because it's not, you know.
First of all, the, thank you, Mayor, for giving the thanks to the vendors today. Today, we had Launchpad, Deidre and her son David, and we also had Maria with El Boca Ron, and Hector Panamericana, and we thank you guys so much for coming out and sharing your business with us, your restaurant with us, and if you guys could come up, we'll take a quick picture with you and...
Let's give them a round of applause and thank them.
If you enjoyed the food.
Sounds like it was a good idea. Let's keep it going. All right. A presentation by DJ Torado on MyCivic311 app. This is a great idea. Actually, three times since the last meeting, I got a call from residents that wanted something addressed, and I referred them to the Civic, to the 311 app, and they were so happy because things got addressed immediately, and it was so much easier. So I think this is a great idea. Tell us more.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, excuse me, council members and public. My name is DJ Torado, Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department, and I'm here to give you a presentation and an update on the MyCivic311 app. So just a reminder of what the MyCivic311 app is. It's a non-emergency online service request system, so for emergencies, please contact 911. Don't use the app. It's to allow residents to request services such as graffiti removal, pothole repairs, and illegal dumping. And you don't need to provide us your contact information. You can do this anonymously if you so wish to do so. And then these requests get sent directly to city staff. So for instance, graffiti removal will be sent over to the Public Works Department, as well as pothole repairs, illegal dumping, some of the miscellaneous concerns that we get, we can direct them to the appropriate city staff as necessary. So there's a couple of ways you can access the MyCivic311. It's accessible by PC on the city of Hawthorne website, and then also you can download it on your phone, and it's available through both iPhone and Androids on the Apple Store and the Google Play Store. So for PC access on the homepage of the city website, you can go underneath the video playing where it says Virtual City Hall, and then you'll get this little diagram that allows you to select the type of request you're looking for. We added a catch-all for other slash miscellaneous concerns. If you see a request over there that's, you know, not pertaining to what you need, you can use the other miscellaneous one to get a general request in, and then we can redirect it to the proper city staff. So once you click on a request, sometimes there's a pop-up depending on the type of request. So just for example, for potholes, make sure that it is within the city limits. Sometimes people will request pothole repairs, but they'll be on the on-and-off ramps, and that is Caltrans, or sometimes it'll be in unincorporated L.A. County. So there are a couple of links that you can click on there just in case it's outside of city limits. And then the app will ask you a couple of questions about, more details about your request. So for instance, for the potholes, it'll ask you for a cross-street location, any description of the pothole or request that you need. Pictures are worth a thousand words, so we encourage residents to submit any pictures that they see if they're able to, just so city staff can get a clearer idea of what the request is entailing. And then again, if you want to be anonymous, that's fine. You can do so. We just request that your request be as detailed as possible, because if you are anonymous, we can't reach out to you and we'll have to close the request. So if you are anonymous, please make sure to be as detailed as possible and be clear in what you are requesting. And then from the mobile version, you can go to either the Apple Play Store or the Google Play Store and download the app that way. You just search MyCivic311, and you can download the app that way. At the top of the homepage of the app, it'll say, request and report, or report an issue, sorry. And then you can look through the different request types. Again, if you don't see the type of requests you need, there's also a catch-all at the bottom that's for other slash miscellaneous requests. And similarly to the online version, you can put in your information if you so decide, and it'll ask you questions about the request that you need. And again, pictures are great. It's just easier for city staff to understand what kind of request you need. I just wanted to provide some data on the requests that we received. So as you can see, illegal dumping is the most requested request, followed by potholes and graffiti removal. So those are the main requests that we do receive from the app. And then on the admin side, city staff can see, when people put in the specific location, we can see where the requests are coming from. So the illegal dumping map shows where residents frequently request illegal dumping to be resolved.
I can't see this far or that far, but are those numbers attached to, you know, those green?
Yeah, so the...
And the yellow ones, too?
If it's yellow, it means there's more of those requests. So in the case of illegal dumping, there's more towards the north side of Hawthorne, and also the southeast side, and also a little bit on the northeast. And then similarly for potholes, there were a lot of requests initially on the on-ramps, so that's why you see a lot, you see it more yellow on the west side, but that's mainly because there are a lot of people requesting potholes to be fixed on the 405 on-and-off ramps, so we had to direct them to Caltrans for those requests. But there's also more towards the southeast side of Hawthorne. And then for graffiti removal, a lot of the requests are towards the east side. So I just wanted to acknowledge some of the public outreach efforts that city staff has been doing. So our social media team has been posting on our social media websites, so Instagram, Facebook. We've been doing a lot of stuff on Channel 22, interviews, and also posting the QR codes on there, too, for residents to see. We have physical flyer distributions as well. There's some outside here at the city council entrance. We also have some at the Public Works counter, and we also are distributing them at city events. So the upcoming spring event, Earth Day, we're going to have a table, and we can distribute the flyers with the QR code if residents would like to download the app on their phone. And we also have some posters posted in City Hall, and they've also been on the billboards all around the city as well. So there is the QR code if you want to download the app on your phone right now, and thank you for your time, and I can take any questions.
DJ, I really appreciate this. Thank you for putting this information together. I mean, like, that's what, I mean, I didn't think it was going to look that great, I mean, that clear as to the situation, and there's enough of those little dots around to give you an idea in what sections things are happening. It's efficient. It's very clear. I want to make a suggestion, and you guys don't have to follow it if it just kind of cuts into what you're doing, but as, if we have events, maybe one of the first things as part of our introduction for whatever event you're hosting is one of the first things, activities you could do, ice breaking or whatever activity, is just to kind of go through the download of this MyCivic311 app. So it's something maybe you could do at your events, anything you might have at yours, mine, and it's like one of the first things that we could do. Like, everybody here should be like taking some time out. Can you take us, can you take the residents? How many people out here have the 311 app already?
Yay.
How many people don't? Okay, so, you know, I won't take time away because the majority of the people did their homework, and so we're going to leave that homework up to you to finish it up, Mr. Myers, okay? And everybody else up here. Make sure you load it up, okay? That's the way we can report things.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, DJ, for not only the efforts, but giving us a slide presentation on all the work that the Department of Public Works is doing to address community concerns. And, you know, the mayor's right, when it comes to constituents contacting us, right? It's always good to educate the community so that they don't have to continuously call us, but handle that on their own, and I'm glad that, however, you know, staff... And I'm glad that, however, you know, staff is open to accepting our requests for assistance on those efforts. But you mentioned potholes, graffiti, and bulky item pickup. I agree. Those have got to be the most heaviest public work in the department. I was just curious, and maybe we could talk offline on this with Vaughn and the Director of Public Works, but I noticed that oftentimes, private property homes have graffiti done on their garage doors. And, you know, oftentimes, because that's private property, we can't touch that because it's private property. But I know in other jurisdictions, in other cities, there's a waiver that they signed and allows for graffiti removal to, you know, have them wipe that down with the color, obviously, of their door, right, their garage. But I want to see how maybe we could work on that, because I know I've seen a couple of businesses, not businesses, residents like that. And I just want to know what's the rule of thumb to address the graffiti removals off of those. But nothing more. Thank you again. I'm glad that you guys are going to be at the Earth Day Service Provider Fair and providing services to the community. And I would like to also see if maybe we could work, and I think this is something that we talked about, Vaughn. If you remember with the security services that we have here in Hawthorne, I forgot what it's called. The bell, what do you call that? The ring. Remember Amazon Ring? Getting them to come and help us with a demonstration of sorts and then offering possibly ring to the residents up to, you know, 100 or so. I don't know. Maybe we could work with them on providing promotion to get folks to sign up for 311, something like this. Okay. Thank you.
To the Chair. I used 311 app last week myself, and lo and behold, guess what? The illegal dumping was gone. So I love it, and I didn't, no fuss, no muss. I have a record. I know a constituent reached out to me and took a picture of her two pending items and wanted a follow-up, and within minutes, it was cleared up and would be taken care of. So even if you're, if it's lingering out there, let us know, and it'll be taken care of. Quick question. Can we do, how do we report sidewalks? Because when you're out walking in the community and there's a lifted sidewalk, how can we do that?
DJ, can you go back to the slide with the most common request and walk us through how, no, keep going back, please, to the image with the icons?
I don't have a screenshot of all of the requests, but there is the catch-all, which is the other slash miscellaneous. I could also, if you would like me to, add maybe a specific sidewalk one, or they can just go to the miscellaneous one.
So who gets the miscellaneous? That's the only reason why I didn't put it under there, because I wasn't sure if it would be out in the ether somewhere.
So it all still goes to Public Works. If it's not related to Public Works, then we redistribute it to the correct department or...
Would we want to track something like that, track the numbers? Like we do with the graffiti and stuff?
It's totally up to you. What do you think, Robert? Should we have an item like that for reporting sidewalk damage?
We could. It really has no legal effect, but we could keep stats on that as well.
Oh. Could we consider maybe, like, is it sufficient? Is it going to be a rarity, or is it going to be common? Does it, will it even cause a blip on that little chart that we had there?
The recommendation I can make, we can add it and give it six months to a year, see if there's reports of that. If we don't see an uptick where it makes sense to have its own icon, then we go back to a catch-all.
Well, it would really help our office if people can report in cracks on the sidewalk and, you know, a different type of levels. Because some of the common claims that the city attorneys receive is slip and fall and type of liability type of cases, and that often happens on sidewalks and streets.
And that's what I was getting at, actually. It costs the city when people trip and fall on our property. And if you're out walking around, which I do and a lot of you guys do, you walk your neighborhood, if you see that, and until we get the sidewalk icon up and running, go ahead and put it in the miscellaneous and get somebody out there to look at it to see how it can be handled. Because we need to be safe and we need to take care of our visitors while they're here in our community too. Also, to your point, Mayor, my two daughters were out in the event signing up people with the 311 app. I don't know how many people they were actually able to sign up, but they were passing out the scan, the QR code, and also downloading instructions. So hopefully, if you were a part of the meet and greet and you didn't have it yet, you now have it, or at least have the information that you needed to be able to download it and use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, DJ. Let's give him a round of applause for assembling this for us. Chief Gary Tomitani, please proceed.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members. I wanted to visit tonight, and I'm kind of excited about this opportunity and appreciative for it. I want to provide a brief update to the City Council on some recently implemented plans between Telehealth Van and the Hawthorne Police Department collectively to improve upon provision of mental health services to the Hawthorne community at large. For a brief history here, the city entered into an agreement with Telehealth Van at the end of calendar year 2021. And since that time, mostly due to a combination of concerns about return on our investment and a population that would accept services, Telehealth Van has essentially become a part of our homeless services community. Current deployments for Telehealth Van are absolutely focused around two city facilities, the first being the homeless services trailer, which is to the rear of Memorial Park, and the second being at our Bridge of Hope Shelter location near the intersection of Crenshaw and El Segundo. And while primarily focusing on our PEH population, the city has also taken additional steps to try to expand the availability of Telehealth Van services to others within our city. So two additional deployment locations for Telehealth Van currently include the DMV parking lot at Corn Blume and El Segundo, and at Northgate Market, which is a shopping center at Prairie and El Segundo. So due to some recent community concerns about the availability of Telehealth Van services at large for our community, the Hawthorne Police Department began brainstorming potential capability gaps where we think that Telehealth Van might be a good fill-in, sort of acting as a safety net for people who are going through some sort of a mental health crisis. And we've come up with several use cases that we think will assist Telehealth Van in expanding their reach within the city of Hawthorne that will also benefit not only the city of Hawthorne, but specifically the Hawthorne Police Department in terms of trying to cut down on some of our repeated responses to the same locations. While the city of Hawthorne does share a clinician from the Department of Mental Health with a neighboring police agency, that essentially results in 20 hours a week of coverage. And as we all know, you know, mental health emergencies and crises don't occur on schedule within that 20-hour-a-week coverage. So we're looking to capitalize on services that Telehealth Van might be able to provide us in addition to where those 20 hours where we don't have the services of a mental health clinician from the Department of Mental Health. I have some specific examples of ideas that we've utilized, and we started implementing these examples approximately three weeks ago in collaboration with Telehealth Van. So while these are specific examples, I'd really appreciate it if the council members would consider these as examples of potential use cases in the future. Within the last 30 days, the Hawthorne Police Department responded to a residence in the city of Hawthorne on a report of an 11-year-old girl suffering from depression. Due to the child's age, location for placement was not readily available to us. This was not during regular business hours, so our officers did the only thing that they could in that situation. They ensured that the child's safety would be addressed, and they got an assurance from the child's parents that medical attention, psychological services would be sought after the following day during business hours. As a result of our brainstorming, we were able to apply our mental evaluation unit detective two days after the incident happened, and we did a house call with Telehealth Van. And introductions were made, and that family now has an option to utilize Telehealth Van services to try and help their 11-year-old daughter heal. So this is potentially one of those situations where in the past, we would be responding three, four, or five times over the course of a calendar year to the same location. And perhaps there's a safety net here that's going to lead to some meaningful improvement in that household. Another use case, we have an elderly resident here in the city of Hawthorne who oftentimes calls 911 to report strangers inside of her residence. Unfortunately for this individual, she lives alone, doesn't have any local family, and the strangers that she reports are imaginary. And we, as the police, you know, kind of a tongue-in-cheek term here, we're a little bit handcuffed in what we can do in that situation. This individual does not fit the criteria for us to mandate that she be taken to a psychiatric facility. So while this is a repeated response, now, since we decided to partner with Telehealth Van to expand services, we've introduced those two parties together. Now, I do want to caution the City Council in regards to the reality on how effective this is going to be. At the end of the day, we still require the potential recipient of services to accept services. These are voluntary services that are being offered to our community members. But I do think that if we continue with this collaboration into the future, we have a significant opportunity here to reduce the number of repeat responses to our known problem locations and to enact meaningful change and recovery for some of our residents. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. I know we were talking about, I might have mentioned it also, and it's good that you took a look to see where Telehealth could help us. I'm really glad and very happy, actually, to hear that there's a path forward in cooperation with you guys. Right on.
Thank you to the Chair. Chief, in the history of just sitting here and listening to how the police department is now involved in not only assuring the public safety, but really making efforts to address the social service need, right? When it comes to mental illness, mental health, depression, all of this and the like. I just have to commend you and your department, your officers, everyone that truly shows compassion and understands that this is a totally, you know, a circumstance that oftentimes police do not like to get involved in. And so just to see the efforts on your part as a leader, a chief, to those that ultimately, you know, are trained, but the training is going beyond that, right? It's now something that we have to together work collectively to address everyone's needs and to assure everyone's safety, no matter, you know, what the circumstance is. And so I just want to commend the efforts that are being made from the department and the city in partnering and seeing how collectively together we could address these concerns where normally we wouldn't. And I just have to, you know, again, acknowledge that and thank Vaughn and thank everybody who's responsible at the end of the day to make, you know, wraparound services, mental health services, a collective effort in working with police. And so thank you for that, and look forward to hearing more stories that are positive and really making a difference in the lives of those that live here in Hawthorne. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure that the city's police officers and police department staff are appreciative of that acknowledgement, because it definitely is not one, it's not those types of calls for service, those are not in our wheelhouse. So we're looking for any assistance that we can get.
To the Chair. I can't remember, but Councilwoman Reyes, you fought for the two young ladies with their organization.
Minority Health Network.
Minority Health Network. I was just also maybe suggesting that maybe you can also have them partner with you as well as Telehelp as well. I think your idea is amazing, and I'm so glad that we have such forward-thinking folks here. It's such a great idea. I wish I thought of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, my God. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Outstanding presentation. When you mentioned 911 calls, it just popped up in my head, because, you know, we are part of the 911 Regional Communication Center, and those 911 calls adds up, right? And then the city is billed based on numbers of calls that we receive from our area. So in Hawthorne, have one of the highest numbers called for 911. And then also remind me that even the, over there, the 911 system now has to have a medical director onboard because of some of those calls sometimes need mental health right there. So again, this is imperative, but it is good that we, Hawthorne, step up, right? Because we're always in forefront of every innovation. And then it's a great service to our community, and my hat goes up to you, because definitely we need mental health, because especially those calls of ghosts, fantasy, you know, so it cannot end up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We're optimistic. We hope that these baby steps will lead to bigger things in the future.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much for this, because I've gotten numerous calls about our Telehealth vans and what do they actually do, and how are they helping the community, and why aren't they doing more? So I appreciate you being sensitive to that, because we have to answer to our constituents about how we're spending money. Because eventually, this is going to become our money that we're going to have to fund this Telehealth van in the future. So I greatly appreciate this. This helps you guys. It helps our citizens. Because I watch cop shows all the time. I confess. And it frustrates me when police officers are put in situations where they have to be a psychologist. They're not. And it just puts everybody in a difficult situation, and my heart goes out to the officer because they're really not trained to be psychologists. So I appreciate you and your team trying to find a way to make the Telehealth van work better for us, and to also make it work for you guys, to give you what you need so you can be more successful when you're out there. So thank you.
We absolutely will do everything we can, Councilmember Johnson, to be fiscally responsible with the city's funds in relation to these types of programs. So we're going to be extremely flexible from this point moving into the future. When we determine that a strategy is not working, we're going to pivot very quickly.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you. This is the last presentation. Dulce Medina. Homeless Services update, please. Let's get to it. I'll be right back.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Manning, City Council members, everyone in attendance. My name is Dulce Medina. I am the Supervisor for Homeless Services and Prevention here in the beautiful city of wonderful neighbors. Let me, I'll try and be as brief as possible. For those who may not know, our office is located at Memorial Park behind the Senior Center. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Let me introduce you to our current team. Aside from me overseeing the supervision of the homeless program, I'm also the Case Manager, the Housing Navigator, and I provide all the referrals and assessments for our tiny home Bridge of Hope Palate Shelter here in the city, and the Pathway Home LAX Stadium Hotel off of Imperial. Raúl Escamilla and Ovidio Solís are our street outreach coordinators subcontracted by LA Cada through LA Cada and funded by the South Bay COG. They are rock stars that have definitely made a mark in the city of Hawthorne and are canvassing all our 22 census tracts in the city. The South Bay Whip also provides a receptionist twice weekly, Tuesdays and Thursdays, to assist us with the phones, just follow-up calls, filing, faxing, copying, and keeping our office running. Aside from the current team, I have to thank the Chief for providing such a wonderful relationship with our wonderful police department. Lieutenant Saldana and the amazing Sergeant Espinoza do joint outreach with our team on a weekly basis, Wednesdays and Fridays, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And without their assistance, we would not be able to cohesively provide the services we do on a daily basis. We also work with Kimberly Mack's team, our housing department, on a daily basis, three, four, or five times. I'm pretty sure she hears that we're in constant communication with her. I'm pretty sure she hears that we're in constant communication with her team, doing case management, providing assistance with the emergency housing vouchers, and have contracts that are needed and just other referrals for our clients. In addition to that, we, our community services department, Gerardo Duran's team, keep our office running and clean, inside and out. So I really want to thank them for doing that. And the office will not be able, our office will not be able to provide the services we do without community partnerships. They are, I value our community partnerships, and I'm not going to read their mission statements, but I do want to point out that the Venice Family Mobile Clinic, which provides our healthcare services, the Telehealth Van, which provides a licensed clinical therapist, the LA Cada, which provides all the alcohol and drug treatment procedures, and our Military Veteran Affairs Office, they have one thing in common, and that one thing in common is to keep our community safe, healthy, and housed. And that, without reading their mission statements, that's why we work with them, because we have the same goal in mind. So the Venice Family Mobile Clinic provides all the healthcare services for individuals. They provide, it's overseen by the nurse practitioner. They are there every Monday, nine to 12. They provide free screenings for HIV and AIDS, tuberculosis, and they treat chronic health conditions from diabetes to high blood pressure, cholesterol, you name it. They are there to treat not just our unhoused residents, but our Hawthorne residents that are slowly but surely coming. Schools are referring them to our site locations on Mondays and also provide prescription medications. And they have a, this is something new that just started a month ago. They started providing a Medi-Cal enroller for those that don't have health insurance. So that's something that the community is benefiting from, from that service. The Telehealth Van has been a committed partner of our unhoused office since 2021. They provide a licensed clinical therapist, provide counseling through the teleprompter inside or outside of the van. They provide court-mandated support letters that we need, that I, when I go appeal a case, I need to show that letter of, of support from the therapist to appeal the client's case for housing vouchers, for bridge placement, for absolutely anything. The primary care support letters are provided as well by the clinical therapist. No insurance is, you know, required. And one thing that they have definitely stepped up in the last, you know, couple months has been the transportation to and from other appointments. That's not in their contract per se, but they are stepping up and providing transportation for our clients as well. Some of the new locations that the chief mentioned were the North Gate Supermarket off of Rosecrans and Prairie and our DMV, okay? They are at Pathway Home, the LAX Hotel, Bridge of Hope, and looking to expand some of the, the locations. The LA Cada Street Outreach Team, as mentioned, they're rock stars. They have definitely made an impact in the city, canvassing with, joint outreach with the marvelous Sergeant Espinoza once again. Without that joint effort, we would not be able to target and encounter all those individuals seeking help. The Military Veteran Affairs provides, it's a new contract, fairly new, started in September of 2024. For the fiscal year, they've provided about 47 encounters, but those encounters have been to our veterans, their families, and their caregivers, which is amazing. And we're looking to hopefully expand those services if the numbers continue to, to grow. They provide benefit services, burial services, college fee waivers, employment referrals, and placement through the veteran affairs, legal processing claims, and just claims in general pertaining their benefits. And they're at our office on the, in the trailer at Memorial Park the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, every week, every month, I'm sorry, from eight to five. And these are some of the services that have been provided by the community partnerships that I've mentioned. If you see the, the bar graph, you'll see that the red depicts all the healthcare services that the Venice Family Clinic has provided for current fiscal year, starting July to current month. The yellow depicts all the telehealth services that they have provided to individuals through their therapist. And those are sessions that they have reported. The Hawthorne PD numbers reflected there are the joint outreach between Sergeant Espinoza and our street outreach coordinators from six to nine a.m. And these encounters are only from six to nine a.m. They are busy. And the green depicts all the street outreach that the street outreach team does Monday through Friday. Two agencies that we currently do not have a contract with, but I could not do the, could not provide the services that we do on a daily basis without their support, their continued support, is St. Margaret Center. Jonathan Said, the homeless supervisor, continues to take referrals for showers, haircuts, eye exams, food distribution for our unhoused clients, and some of our clients that have been housed receive the food distribution without getting in a waiting list because of the continued support and partnership that we've had. St. Margaret has been in existence since 1987, and they do hold a dear place in my heart. The Department of Mental Health, it has been amazing. We work very closely with Patty Pacillas, who is the psychiatric social worker, along with the amazing detective Alex Khan from our wonderful police department. They respond to severe and crisis mental health calls when 5150 hold has to be placed on one of our clients. And without their support, once again, from our police department and our office, we would not be able to carry out these type of services to our, to our residents. Our Bridge of Hope Community Housing, it's, it's my baby, and I think I share the same sentiment with Kimberly Mack and our city manager. I, I want to see this pallet shelter thrive, and hopefully we get future funding from, from the county and so forth. It opened back in May of '23, and the second year anniversary is around the corner. LA Cada provides the oversight for the pallet shelter. Homeless Service, our office provides all the assessments and referrals for those individuals that are going to be residing at our pallet shelter. Residents get to stay there between 30 to 120 days. Some do stay longer if there is a pending housing voucher in the works. All residents receive intense case management, job referrals, sometimes placement through the South Bay Whip. I think the last council meeting the South Bay Whip presented, our office has provided 15 referrals to the South Bay Whip, and eight of them have been placed in jobs throughout the county through, and I think two of them in the city. I'm not sure where the location, but that's something that we need to be proud of, and that's what community partnerships are all about. They also receive housing navigation, and all of them are encouraged to come out to our office for Community Mondays and throughout the week to see the telehealth van for therapy and counseling, which it is a requirement, and also the medical services. Some of the stats that Bridge of Hope have demonstrated, 108 people have been housed this fiscal year alone, starting July up to February of this year. So 108 people have passed through our pallet shelter, our tiny homes, 60 males, 48 females, 15 seniors, and LA Cada has provided 33 activities for the residents there, from movie night to karaoke, exercise, board games, field trips. And I do want to, let me go back one slide. I want to thank Councilwoman Reyes English, Councilmember Montero, and Dana for their constant support, oh, I'm sorry, and Erica from the HR department, their constant donations and constant support to continue this. It's, it's been a blessing, and I truly appreciate that partnership. Last but not least, oh, yes, okay. Thank you. Yes, 16 residents have been permanently housed through Bridge of Hope, and that's wonderful. It takes a good year to actually house someone, and for us to be able to house 16 residents in this fiscal year alone, I could definitely provide you the stats for the previous year, and we, this is our second year running. So, city of Hawthorne, feel proud of, of our accomplishments. The last but not least is the homeless count. Councilmember Faye Johnson, thank you so much for coming out. Hopefully you enjoyed the ride-along with Lieutenant Saldana. You could see the, the homeless count throughout the years here in the city of Hawthorne from 2020 to 2025. The bar will show that we have consistently decreased. We're, we're on a, on a good run of decreasing our unhoused. We have a goal set to eradicate homelessness, and, and I am pretty positive that we could definitely accomplish it, but we cannot accomplish it without community partnerships. And if it's one thing that you take away is that community partnerships are desperately needed and are valued, and I, I want to continue, see them grow and expand services if, if possible. But as of this morning, LASSA still has not provided our LASSA count for 2025. We're hoping that they release the numbers, I'm thinking before the fiscal year is up, hopefully by June. But if you remember last year, I think they provided the numbers September of, towards the end of the year. But yeah, as some of, I want to definitely thank Lieutenant Saldana, Officer Yoshida, Detective Yoshida, and Sergeant Espinoza for coming out. And several of the chief's department have come out since I've been on board in 2020. They have taken the volunteers on ride-alongs, and we would not be able to, to carry out these services without their support. And last but not least, I think my department and the city has definitely stepped up and demonstrated our city manager's hashtags. You know, we're, we're growing, we're progressing, and we are definitely providing services to our community. Thank you.
Dulce, I want to thank you and your team and all the city staff and all those people from the county that's been assisting. I like seeing that the numbers are going down, and I like seeing results. So I want to, first of all, congratulate you. This is something that I've always wanted, and I think there's a lot of things we need to make some conclusions about. I still, at this point, I'm going to be requesting the following. I need to see what your profile of each of these homeless individuals or unhoused individuals looks like. What's the data that you take? There has to be a standard set of questions you guys are interacting. If you don't, we're going to have to establish that. It's not like, hey, just tell us about yourself and just write, no. I think that's part of it, interview, but there also has to be the standard questions, and I'm pretty sure you, you must have something. So I'd like to take, see if you could pass that along, you know, where, what's your name, you know, like where you've, where, where were your last resident of? How long have you been here? Different things, because one of the things is that, at least I want to avoid, is, hey, are these Hawthorne residents that all of a sudden lost their residency here in the city of Hawthorne or are homeless? Or are these people that are making their way over here for X reason? It doesn't matter, maybe, just, you know? Sometimes we've got some, remember there was like this whole thing where kids from the Midwest or the East Side, East Coast, we used to come here because they wanted to make it big in Hollywood? Where would they land, you know? Is it one of those things? And now they just couldn't make their way into Hollywood, and now things didn't, went downhill for them? It's just like, I want to make some conclusions here so that we can make some decisions up here about how to help and how to make sure that, like, we're able to explain this to the residents who have brought some of these concerns or questions to me. So could you please provide that to me? Maybe you should have something that you can show me maybe the end of this week?
Yes, I could send it over.
End of this week, whatever that looks like, and then I just look it over, and you're, you're doing, you're executing your job wonderfully, wonderfully, along with the staff. So thank you for executing and making that happen. So, you know, we just want to, from our perspective, we need to be able to talk about it intelligently on our end. Is that good? Thank you.
The chair. Sir.
Thank you, Ms. May. Thank you, Dulce, for the presentation. Outstanding. I want to just quick, give us an overview of your relationship with the South Bay Cog, right? Because, you know, we know they provide some funding. But also tell them some of the stories because Hawthorne and Redondo Beach is the one that's been highlighted about the tiny home has been so successful in LA County. And also the fact that the South Bay Cog work with us in a partnership that also have sent people back to their hometown, to Texas, to Mexico, and paid their weight on a bus or on a plane to go back home. So explain that for me, please.
So the South Bay Cog provides 100% of the funding for the street outreach program that we have implemented here in the city. And this fiscal year, I, I don't know the stats right away, but I could definitely pick them up. Just, but just in the past four months, I know we did three reunifications, which code enforcement assisted me with as well, so that shows another partnership that has been implemented. We provided reunification back to Texas. The cog fully paid for it. We also provided reunification to not so far, Palmdale, but it is, is away. And then we provided reunification to Chicago for a family. So, and the cog has fully paid for the, the flight and so forth. In addition to that, they've, they've assisted with hotel vouchers, rental assistance, security deposit. Right now that the county has not provided our jurisdiction full access to the county system, I have to find ways to see what agencies or partner would be able to assist us with that client aid funding. And the cog has definitely stepped up to cover all security deposit for those folks that are working or part-time working that have been removed from the street to interim shelter placement to permanent housing. So that's the only way the South Bay Cog will assist in that manner and pay for that security deposit for that individual.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Thanks.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Dulce, for your presentation. I missed this year, being able to count, but I'll be available next year. Thank you for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions. I, my enroller certificate just expired, but I'm just wondering, for the Medi-Cal enrollment, the company that you work with, Venice, do they do, are they there every single day to enroll for Medi-Cal?
Not every day. They're only out on Mondays from nine to 12.
So are you open to other partnerships? Because I have two other organizations that do enrollment for Medi-Cal that could probably cover those other days that have reached out to me.
I am definitely open, but that's something that I would definitely have to discuss with Kwanah and, and my city manager, yes, but, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'll put, I'll talk to Vaughn, the city manager, about that. And then the other question is, have you heard of an organization called Delete the Divide, where they provide computers to folks who will take like an eight-hour class? So I was just thinking I can connect you with them, and maybe they could provide laptops for those folks that are in the tiny homes.
Sounds wonderful. I mean, it even sounds great for those folks that have been permanently housed, especially families with children that could definitely take advantage of that, but.
Okay. Yeah, they teach them basic skills on the computer, and then after the eight hours, they can provide them with a laptop. So I'll talk to you offline about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Dulce, for the presentation. Everything I, I think and I believe that I needed to know with regards to the services and the delivery that are being made here in Hawthorne to assist those in need was here today in your presentation, especially the partnerships with the service providers. If you're not familiar with casework, right? It's very important to understand the person that you're working to help. At the end of the day, there's many resources that are missing, and it's the missing puzzle, and some of those missing puzzles are those service providers that can assist. Just like individuals that have mental health issues, behavioral health issues, oftentimes you come across, they don't have a driver's license, they don't have an ID, they don't have any form of identification. That's a come. There's providers, service providers that work with the DMV to assure that there's an ID provided so that they could have an ID and know who they are. And then in turn, they don't have a post office or a box to where to receive that. And then in turn, they don't have a post office or a box to where to receive that. So oftentimes, we're having to use the address here in Hawthorne to get services for them that they desperately need. So casework is very important. Casework is also private. A lot of data that is being shared among LSA, Los Angeles Home and Service Authority, City of Los Angeles, and other agencies is shared data. And it can't go anywhere but within those entities that are receiving services and providing a service. So oftentimes, things that we want, we oftentimes can't get. And that's just because of the safety factor and the privacy factor. And, you know, Mayor, your leadership is great. Don't get me, don't get me wrong. But the connection with those individuals that are unhoused, homeless, et cetera, has, there has been efforts for years, not just this year, for years in getting them connected with their family members. So these folks that are, I'm having echo here, those family members that, you know, are desperate to find their loved ones, they're missing somewhere, right? They're homeless, they're mental health, behavioral, they're somewhere. They're at John Doe, they're somewhere. We often have in the past tried to connect them with their family members wherever they may live. And you'd be surprised how family will say, we've been looking for them for years now, right? So just making the reunifications, getting them back to their families so that those families could help them, truly help them, is efforts that everyone's been trying to make. And we went up to Santa Barbara, and we participated in Contract Cities. And we had other cities there that were addressing their homeless needs. And Redondo Beach claims, claims that there, there's zero, that they now are considered, they eradicated homeless, right? I'd love to say that, too, I really would. But, you know, we've been talking about eradicating homeless in Skid Row downtown LA since 1999. So I'm very familiar with that. So I just have to give it up to everyone that is working in efforts that address Hawthorne. Hawthorne, we are doing things that no other city is doing. And we've been doing this just in 2021 when Vaughn came onboard. And it's leadership like the Chief, Vaughn, yourself, and others that have stepped up to the plate to provide a service, like Lakota, you know, Telehealth Van, St. Margaret Center. St. Margaret's been with us for years, years. So it's just good to know that we're in the right path, and we actually are bringing down our homeless count. And the reason we do the homeless count, you know, going out to the community and counting homeless, believe it or not, if you're sleeping on a couch, you're homeless. Even though you're in a house with somebody, you know, some other family, and you're on a couch, you're still considered homeless. So numbers matter and funding matter. So I got to give it up to cog that's giving money to reconnect families. And we're going to continue to push for grant money and any assistance we can. The issue is here, it's not going away. So no matter how, you know, you want to beat the fact that, you know, we're not providing this enough, or we're giving away money with that, no. We're trying to address an issue that has been going on forever here in Hawthorne, and we finally are addressing it. And that's the good thing about having a clean, you know, slate of individuals that get it, especially in our leadership, in Vaughn, and especially on the council, in the mayor's seat, that actually are addressing the needs. Because unless we address the needs and say that there are, there is a problem, we're never going to fix it. So I'm glad that we're in, we're headed in the right direction. The Chief spoke today on those efforts, you're speaking today on those efforts. I think the community in Hawthorne is realizing this. Businesses are realizing this, because oftentimes, they're the ones that are complaining about having homeless sitting at their front door when they arrive, you know, to open their business. And so, again, thank you for all that you're doing. Continue to push. Anything we could do as a council to help, we'll do that. I want to thank you for just allowing me to come to the tiny homes. The picture there that I was providing food to the homeless, to our tiny home residents, I should say, was on Thanksgiving. It was Thanksgiving, I didn't have nowhere to go, so I picked up some food, I had it ordered, and I brought it in, and we sat up there at tiny homes, and I had Thanksgiving with them.
They were very grateful.
And I, and I had fun, too, you know, be able to share a meal with them and talk with them. At the end of the day, you know, it's about just being a giving and kind community and knowing that we have a need, that's all. That's all it is. But thank you, I really appreciate your, your presentation. It was really nice, and all the numbers and graphics and things like this, I think that, that's great work. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I have to give thanks to Community Services Mike Perez. He beautified it for me. Mine's are a lot more simpler. He made it look pretty. Thank you.
Dulce?
Yes.
I want to thank you once more for your efforts. And as you guys saw, the list of service providers that are under this umbrella are extensive. So no one can say that we're not offering enough service. In fact, cities like Redondo Beach, Torrance, Cover City have modeled their homeless response forces. They never, there was a period when they, we were the first ones to actually come up with the task force. And they're the ones that modeled it after us. They followed, they have followed us for many things, including during COVID. They would call us to find out how we would help the, those who are unhoused, those who are sick, who, those, how we did our testing, how we gave food to the, those who were needy. They followed all that different stuff. And then they followed, they, you know, what do you call it? The coffee with the cop and all these different things. But this is one thing that people, those cities have modeled after us. And, you know, Redondo's claims of eradicating homeless is bullshit, you know? It's not true. You know, they, you go down there, you cruise down there on the, on the road and try, turn where you're going to lead up to the pier, you can see the tents right there and everything. And that's Redondo Beach. So, you know, let's, let's be honest. But for the residents, okay? Yeah, we're going to, we're a very compassionate city, and we want to help. But the residents also need to know that, from my perspective, I still want to make sure that if there's anything that you feel, if you're reporting something where somebody's doing something that they shouldn't be doing, that happens to be out on the street, whether it's a resident or somebody who's homeless or whatever, they pitched a tent in front of your house or their business, that's why we have the 311 app, where you could put your information in there so that the city could respond. There's a lot of times where, like, I get people calling me up, oh, there's a homeless person pitched over here at the, behind this store and over here in front of my business. There are some people on my, on the sidewalk, and I can't get to my car, or they're using. That's what the 311 app, if you call me, that already happened like two or three hours. You're already pissed off for like about four or five hours, and then you decide to reach out to me. And by the time I call it in, you know, it's, you know, that's already six or seven hours. When, if you have the 311 app and you enter it, it could be addressed almost, pretty much very quickly soon before that person makes their way somewhere else. And then that person could be contacted, and the appropriate action could be taken. That's what the 311 app does. Basically, you come to me, you're just venting with me, because nothing's going to be able to happen, because, you know, that's, that person's long gone, and you can't address it. But just want to let the residents know that if there's something that's a crime, it's still a crime. I just, I don't want to be, I don't want to be excusing things that are happening, you know, just because a person has a home, or they don't, et cetera. A crime is a crime, and so we just need to hold those people accountable, too. So the residents deserve a quality of living, because you spent a lot of money buying or paying your rent here in the city. So we still need to maintain the quality of life for our residents. So I just want you guys to understand. I want to provide the counterbalance to what we're talking about, so thank you, Dulce. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Dulce, I'm sorry. I'm the baby on the council, I kind of get neglected once in a while. That's okay. I do appreciate you and all that you do. I mean, I got to see your grace and your eagerness to do your job and the effort that you put at your job when we did the homeless count. And I know it's difficult, you still have a smile on your face, you're dealing with tragedy and, and the suffering of people, because it's not easy being homeless at all. And so I just wanted to tell you thank you, and I appreciate you, and I love your smile. And I think your, your passion that you have for your job shows through in what you're doing, so thank you.
I appreciate your words, everyone's words, thank you.
Give it up for Dulce, guys, like, for real. She's the right person for that job. All right, oral communications, we have a short agenda after this.
Roll call first, maybe? Do you want to do roll call?
Yes.
And we do have a short agenda after this, so we're going to do the roll call, then the oral communications, and breeze through the agenda. Go ahead, Ms., roll call.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Manning. Mayor Vargas.
Yeah. And myself, I'm here. Is that fine?
Oral communications.
Yes, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Is there an Andressa here? Andressa?
Anarisa.
Anarisa? Hi, Anarisa.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff and community members. My name is Anarisa Coachila. I am the owner of Express Employment Professionals. We're a staffing and recruiting firm here in Hawthorne, the beautiful city of Hawthorne. First of all, I'm humbled to be in front of you and to present after these amazing speakers and organizations. I only hope and pray to be half as impactful as they. Basically, Express Employment Professionals has partnered with Lynx, which is a private-public partnership selected by the Los Angeles World Airport to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain LAMP, the Landside Access Modernization Program, which a majority of the work being done comprises of the LAX Automated People Mover. As you all know, there's been a lot of construction going on at LAX, and it's nearing, LAMP is nearing its completion. It's being now transitioned to the operations and maintenance mode of the, of the project. We've been tasked with recruiting, interviewing, employing the future employees of LAX Automated People Mover. We are due to have the first cohort of trainees begin on May 1st with about a 90-day training program, a paid training program through August 18. It is scheduled to be passenger service available by January, February of 2026. So we're, we're looking to have people assigned to the positions by mid-April so we can conduct the regular onboarding and such. So I am here in front of you today to request for your guidance and advice on how to partner with the city as well as the community members and organizations, and how to provide employment opportunities and expand access to employment, not just for the typical job seekers, but also for the non-traditional job seekers, again, seeking for airport-related careers. We are looking for staff who would be interested, who would have an inclination in electrical, electrical, mechanical types of positions. We will be employing the central control operators, which, I don't know if you're aware, it's the trains going around the LAX Airport is actually driverless. They're, they're controlled by computers within the facility. We're looking for maintenance technicians, operating technicians, fixed facilities technicians. So any, any help that you can provide in collaboration and partnership would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. If you could please provide our Mayor Pro Tim your information. She has a fair, job fair, that, job expo that you could promote at. And you could also provide her city manager your business card, so we could be, you could be contacted.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
There's a lot of opportunities, absolutely, so.
Much appreciated.
I'm going to help you, we talked about that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Depending if she wants to have it as an independent effort, maybe connecting with the South Bay.
We just need to get flyers out, so, yeah.
Will do.
Thank you.
But just make sure you get the info. Parks and Rec Commission, talking about the art show, please.
Good evening. I'm Richard Hune, Chairman of the Parks and Rec, I mean, the, yeah, Parks and Rec and Fine Arts Commission. This is Solis, and Armenia Balboa. We have an art festival that's coming up Thursday, May 1st, 6 to 8. It's about our fifth art festival that we've had, and it's.
May 1st?
May 1st, yes, 6 to 8. All schools in the Hawthorne area, private and public, are invited to participate in this art show. Last year, we had the entire Sunroom Memorial Center full of tables and chairs, exhibiting the arts from the various schools. The Hawthorne School District is probably the prime group of people that participate, but we do have, we do have participation from other schools as well. And we have sent out the flyers, sent out the application to the schools. And Armenia and, she isn't here, I guess. They, they kind of, they've got an inside to all the teachers, and they jab them and say, okay, we got to get, got to get stuff in here. So we're hoping for another big, big event next year, this year, on May 1st. Did you have something there?
We are going to have also the dance schools at the Memorial Center are going to participate. I think the Folklodico Group is going to participate this year, and the little kids with their ballet. And we're really excited, and we want everybody to come and encourage the kids to explore art. That's a very important part of their lives, too. Thank you so much, and I have one for each one of you, then you won't forget.
Thank you, ma'am. There used to be a time when you used to come pick up the flyers right here near the information booth, you remember? They used to have all the flyers for the different thing, for events. You used to be able to pick them up, like the 10Ks, the 5Ks and everything, track meets and everything. But those, those days are gone, now we have social media, right? Which is cool, right? All right, next person, Olivia Valentine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Olivia Valentine, former city council member. Greetings to everyone. Some of my former colleagues will remember 2021, when SB 9 and SB 10 were passed by the state legislature as transit-oriented development. And at that time, we pushed back, the council pushed back and opposed that legislation as, already? As destructive of single-family housing and local control. There are new bills that have been proposed that are following along that same vein, intended to support SB 9. So I first want to mention SB 79, which was proposed by Senator Weiner and has been referred to the Committees on Housing and Local Control. This bill would make it legal to build multifamily housing within a half or a quarter mile near a transit-oriented rail development stop or rapid bus line, including in areas currently zoned only for single-family homes. It would require upzoning near rail stations and bus lines, just like SB 9. As a matter of fact, it's supposed to strengthen SB 9. For a development within a half mile of a transit-oriented development stop, the local government may not require less than 100 units per acre, and it may be built up to 65 feet high or up to the local height limit, whichever is greater. If it is less than a quarter mile, and this is the part that we should be concerned about, if it's less than a quarter mile from a transit stop, the local government may not require less than 120 acres, units per acre, and the development may be built up to 75 feet high or up to the local height limit, whichever is greater. The state contends it's a matter of statewide concern and is not a municipal affair. It should be opposed because the governance is not at the lowest level possible, which would be the city's. Cal Cities, by the way, is opposed to this bill. The other bill, I'm not going to spend any time on that one. SB 677, also proposed by Senator Weiner. This one would require ministerial approval for proposed housing developments containing no more than two residential units on any lot hosting a single-family home or zoned for few, for or fewer residential units, notwithstanding any covenant or condition imposed. notwithstanding any covenant or condition imposed by a common interest development association. This one is supposed to also strengthen SB 9, but this one is related, this one applies to condo complexes, which probably would not affect us very much at this point because our condo complexes have already been built. Nevertheless, in the future, it would apply also to condo complexes. So anyway, I urge you to contact your state legislatures and let them know that... Or let me put it this way. Consider contacting your state legislatures and let them know that you believe this will oppose or be detrimental to local control. This is something, cities have to push back against this. Otherwise, you won't recognize the city of Hawthorne. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be upzoned everywhere, and in 10 years, it won't look like, it won't be the same city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, can you, can you do those two? Take a look at those, please?
Yes.
What's wrong with this Weiner guy? Where the hell did he come from, dude? He's like the devil incarnate, I can tell you, man. Comes up with the weirdest things, man. Weirdest things, man. I don't think he ever has left San Francisco. Not every city is like San Francisco. Not every city is like San Francisco. Cal Cities, I mean, what the heck is wrong with this guy? Sorry, sorry, it pisses me off. Jesus, Daniel Granados. Now we got an angel, Daniel Granados, coming up. Jesus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Daniel Granados, manager at Hawthorne Library. Just a couple of quick announcements from the library. The first is that the Friends of the Library will be holding a used book sale on April the 12th, Saturday, April 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Please stop by and buy some used books and help support the library. Also, if you have any books at home you'd like to donate, please do bring those to the library anytime that we are open. Please don't leave them outside the library. Books do not take kindly to the elements. By the time we get to them, a lot of times, they're no longer usable, but please bring them into the library anytime we're open. Next, I would just ask the community to please excuse our construction. We have some construction underway. Our public restrooms and our community meeting room will not be available for the next several months. At the end of this construction, we'll have some brand-new ADA-accessible public restrooms and a new front entrance that'll be ADA-accessible. And I think both of those things are probably 50, 60 years old, so long overdue. But we're looking forward to having those. Thank you.
Mayor, Daniel, real quick. April 12th, the same day as your book sale? You should come and set up a table at the park. That's where all the people's gonna be. Please.
Well, the Friends of the Library.
Thank you, Daniel.
Sure.
Bring your books to the park. Great, thank you.
Been on the same day?
Yes, same day.
Well, maybe with Eric.
Yeah, the Friends knew about the event, but, yeah, that was the only day that worked for them.
Let's see what works out the best.
That's perfect. That's where people's gonna be.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak, form a line, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ruben Sanchez. I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. I would like to invite everyone to our Easter, our annual Easter egg hunt that's gonna happen on April 5th from 11:00 to 3:00 at Eucalyptus Park. Also, I'm sorry, I don't have flyers with me. My board member was gonna show up, but she had an emergency. She kept the flyers. Also, I wanted to mention, thank you Fay Johnson for what you did earlier in regards of the residents meeting, the businesses. Hope that continues. That's something very needed for the city because, as you can see, we need businesses in our city. We need to attract a lot more businesses. And right now, what we see is that that's not really to happen. And the reason is because instead of you focusing on bringing in high-earning residents into our communities in order to bring these businesses, you're not. You guys have gone over and over again for the past few years about unhoused and homelessness. I get it, people need help and support, but that has been your focus, the majority. Right now, the council has been focused on that for like years. No one has been focusing on bringing in businesses, attracting high-earning residents. That's the only way we're gonna be able to. You know, because right now, the way we're moving, we're not moving forward when it comes to commerce. You know, we need to start forming a plan and start talking about this because you guys are just dead bent on the whole homelessness. And you know, you know how offensive it is when people are saying, oh, mental health, mental health, mental health? Do you understand that the residents outside, they don't deal with mental health people? They deal with mental disorder. Okay, when you're saying mental health, you know, that's offensive towards people in the spectrum because you're, now you're bunching everyone up. It's that, what you're dealing over there, the people outside defecating in the middle of the streets, the ones that are jumping into your homes, the ones that are urinating in front of your house or getting naked in front of your children, that's mental disorder. I doubt that in the backseat of a van, you're gonna be able to fix that. Okay, so, so, please, be truthful to the residents. You guys have all these partnerships, but yet there are no contracts. No contracts on our websites. We need to know what's really going on behind the scenes. Right now, you're talking about the telehealth van. You know, that guy, he has a business plan. He, you know what? As a matter of fact, that's respectful. The guy who started with the telehealth van slapped on a couple of emojis on his van, and he's making hundreds and thousands of dollars. I respect that. But it's up to you, the majority here. You have to have the business sense to understand what they're doing. Instead of giving away stuff, you guys gave what? That, those fees for the Sparks, a multimillion-dollar franchise owned by, I don't know, some white dude over there who owns the Dodgers, and have nothing in return. And how do we know that? Because there are no contracts. There's nothing in writing. Please, do better. Let's all work together for a better Hawthorne. God bless the city of Hawthorne. God bless you guys.
Next, please?
Good evening. This is my first time being here in a city council meeting. I've been in the city of Hawthorne. I migrated from the city of Compton back in 2010, seeking for a better education for my children, my family, and also for better housing. I want to thank the Housing Department, Ms. Dulce. You've been amazing. She has helped a lot of our residents. Some of our residents that were going through financial issues. I think her program is amazing, as stated. We have a lot of stories where we can say that the city of Hawthorne, the housing program has assisted our residents, our citizens out there, so we appreciate the program. As not just a resident, I am also here representing Real Estate Connection, which is a management company that oversees a few community properties out here in the South Bay area. The reason I'm here representing my team as well is for a lot of reasons. As far as the bulky pickups, we have a lot of that stuff going on. Some of our communities that actually go through it the most are located from Cordeary to Dodie. If you've been in the city of Hawthorne for a minute, everyone knows what Dodie looks like, how is represented. As a property manager, we continue to seek as far as any vendors, any programs from the city to assist with bulky pickups. I have pretty much a whole year of what my team has spent on just bulky pickups. It is a big issue because we keep getting hit by the city because these things sit outside. We have no control over it. We can't get cameras, and according to the city, we need cameras in order for you guys to prosecute who's doing the illegal dumping. Unfortunately, my team won't be able to provide exterior cameras. So I was trying to see how the city can assist us as landlords, but also as residents, to see how we can help clean up our city as well. Because we have a lot of residents that work in SpaceX, the airport, our school districts, and they're paying more than 2Gs for rent. And I don't think it's fair that we're paying that much. And we continue, as a team, as a real estate company, we continue to clean up our streets, our buildings, but at this point, you know, it has pretty much impacted our finances. So I'm here to see what programs can assist us to help keep the community clean.
Real quick question. You're a real estate company that does property management for...
That's correct.
Okay, so there's some rich dude up in Palos Verdes or Beverly Hills that pays you guys to do what you do. Maybe it's time to increase the amount that you guys charge him so you guys could regulate this. I think that's an idea I wanted to push back on you, and you could start talking to them and adjust your fees. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city councilman. My name is Richard Harrison, long-term resident of Hawthorne. I try to be super, super fast. I operate on the premise of 50% public policy, 50% personal responsibility. And I kind of want to give you an example of that. On this, on Cordeary at El Segundo, there's a lot of trash over there. I don't live on Cordeary, but I kept driving by, and I got tired of looking at it. So I went, I stopped, I looked, and I realized it was coming from Extra Storage, the dumping company. So I go to the, I go over, I'm sorry, the storage company. So I go to the office, I talk to Eddie. Eddie's the manager of public storage, extra storage. I said, hey, dude, yo' folks are dumping stuff out on the street. So we walk out there, he looks, he says, man. So he said, I'm gonna clean it up. He cleans up half of it, right? I come back a day later, there was still a couch, a mattress out there. There was a homeless guy sleeping. I was like, dang. So I leave him alone, I go, I come back to work. He's in the same position. I thought the dude was dead. So I call 911. They pick him up. I go home, come back, he's gone. So then I was like, okay, cool. The trash, I called Eddie again. He said, man, I called dumping, but they're not here yet. So then what I do, I call the mayor. I said, Vargas. I sent him a text. He didn't get back to me. He was busy. Then I call Katrina. She gets right back to me. She says, hey, Richard, how can I help you? I sent her pictures. She said, look, I'll take care of it this time, but next time, you need to call Public Works. So she calls Public Works. All of Cordeary is cleaned up. That's where personal responsibility meets public policy. Where we need you guys at is enforcement. You could know in Hawthorne, you know in Hawthorne where you can't park, but you don't know you can't dump. And every parking sign, put a dumping sign. I think the first sign is, the first tier fee is $300 to $1,000. Have dumping signs that says, no dumping, violators receive $1,000 fine. That's why you see that in handicap parking. That's why you see that when you're in a carpool lane. Because, damn, I'm gonna get a $460 fine. So we gotta have, we gotta let people know they can't dump, and then we need you guys for enforcement. The signs shouldn't cost a lot of money. So that's what we need, you guys enforcement. Second issue. I have a really huge problem with the amount of extracurricular massage parlors. I call them circle jerks. We got six circle jerks, massage parlors, in a two-mile radius, right? So here's the thing. They're in the black and brown neighborhoods. You don't see massage parlor, they're not Massage Envy or Burke Williams. They're, I mean, the women in there are literally being in sex traffic. It's a network. One opened up next to the Starbucks on El Segundo, and there's one on El Segundo and Perry called Aloha Massage. There are four of them between El Segundo and Imperial, I mean, El Segundo and Rosecrand. And there's one on Inglewood. It's a cesspool out here. I mean, is this literally what we're about? I mean, you got, you got, you got the big city of Inglewood. Now you got El Segundo with the Chargers. And Hawthorne is known for sex massage parlors. Stop giving these people licenses. Let's get this cleaned up and build the city what it should be. I expect more out of you guys, and I don't want to see this no more. We got eight times more concentrated.
Sorry, your time is up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll come back next time and do a presentation. Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Sir, 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 real quick. You're gonna be the biggest promoter of the 311 app, okay? So make sure you promote that.
I will.
Because that's the key to kind of get some of that stuff solved.
Yeah.
Take a lot of frustration out of it.
And I apologize for calling you guys. I should have did 311. I shouldn't be calling you guys for trash on the street, so I want to apologize to you both.
No, you can still do that, but just the 311 app.
Okay, I'm gonna call you every day then. No more massage parlors in Hawthorne, please. Thank you.
311, 331 or 311? Yeah. Yeah, the 311 app is just, you know, just...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and neighbors. One quick thing on the 311 app. It took me several tries to find it because I was looking under 311, and it's not listed that way. You have to make sure that you do the search for my civic 311. And I finally got help and was able to get it installed, thanks to our officers over here. So just some clarification on that. Please be specific. The other thing I wanted to bring up basically is that this Saturday is March 29th, and every March 29th is designated as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. So there are a number of activities going on for Vietnam veterans. That particular day was chosen in perpetuity, basically because that was the day in 1973 when the United States Military Assistance Command of Vietnam was disestablished, and also the day the last US combat troops departed in Vietnam. In addition, that's approximately the same day that Hanoi released the last of its acknowledged prisoners of war. So that's this Saturday. There's a number of events that are going on. If you know of any Vietnam veterans, I know your dad is one, please make it a point to welcome them home and to say thank you to them. And also, they're estimating through the Department of Veterans Affairs right now that there are between 6 and 7 million US Vietnam veterans living in America and abroad left out of the millions who served during that timeframe. We're losing over 900, 900 Vietnam veterans per day at this point, mostly because of toxic exposures related to Agent Orange. So please, make it a point while those veterans are still alive to acknowledge their service, to thank you for what they've done. And this year, on Veterans Day, will be the end of the 50-year commemoration of the Vietnam War. So please keep that in mind as well. Maybe we can do some kind of... Maybe we can do some kind of a service to honor them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, sir, come on up.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Ryan Richard, Planning Commissioner, Holly Park Neighborhood Association President. I came today just to say, I have one real quick thing with the Planning Commission. Over the past few years, we've had, struggled with a little bit of making sure that we're able to maintain a quorum by having the number of planning commissioners we needed. Fortunately, we did have a planning commissioner who abruptly had to leave the commission now, and it has placed us back in a space where we do still meet quorum, but unfortunately, we have folks that have moving schedules sometimes, so it's harder for us to meet. Unfortunately, this last week, at a very important planning commission meeting that we had to cancel or postpone due to lack of quorum. So I was coming here today to ask the commission, or to ask the council to please be proactive or aggressive in putting another council, another commissioner there so we can continue to provide the service that we do to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, can you put the promotion out, make an announcement, give it a couple of weeks, and then let's see the stuff? Please, thank you. Anybody else? If neither, declare oral communications closed, order. All right, let's move on with the city council meeting. We have, we have no action discussion items, and we just have items to vote on, so... Go ahead, ma'am.
City clerk consent calendar. Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They're items 7 through 11 for your consideration and approval. Actually, item 8, I'll have to read separately. Councilmember Johnson will not be voting on that one. Item 7, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 9, Approval of waiver of full readings and resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025's agenda. Item 10, Resolution Number 8514, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving an agreement for electric vehicle charging station design and installation project with Chargee. Item 11, Resolution Number 8515, a resolution of the City, of the, City of, Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the Social Security Administration Office of Acquisition and Grants Contract Number 2832325C00060002 for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote, folks.
Did you enter the meeting?
Enter the meeting.
Thank you for voting for me.
The votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Item 8.
Item 8, Approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes for the regular city council meetings of March 12th, 2024, March 26th, 2024, and the special meetings of March 19th, 2024, and December 12th, 2023.
I make a motion.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay, yeah, that's right. City Manager's Consent Calendar, please.
City Manager's Consent Calendar, item 12, progress payment number four in the amount of $30,000 due to Huntington Beach Electric, Inc. of Huntington Beach, California, for Hawthorne Jim Thorpe Park and City Hall Council Chambers Lighting Project Number 23-07. Item 13, award of contract for Hawthorne Police Department Roof Replacement Project, Project Number 25-09. Item 14, 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Item 15, 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Item 16, consult agreement with Kim Lee Horn to provide sequoia analysis for a project at the Hawthorne Municipal Airport. Item 17, progress payment number two in the amount of $607,312.53 due to Martinez Landscaping Company of Solmar, California for general maintenance, Project Number 22-05. Item 18, progress payment number seven and eight in the amount of $701,143.40 due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California for the Zella Davis Park Renovation, Project Number 24-04. Item 19, Department of Public Health, Public Health Services Contract between the City of Hawthorne and the County of Los Angeles. Item 20, progress payment number two in the amount of $873,696.92 due to PCN3, Inc. of Los Alamos, California, for the City of Hawthorne New Senior Center. That's Project Number 24-03. Item 21, changes to the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the DTA Public Finance to perform a development impact fee study. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 12 through 21?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote, folks.
The votes are in. Vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
I will now recess the city council meeting and open the successor agency meeting. Madam Secretary, item 22, please.
Item 22, receive and file Housing Successor Agency Report for Fiscal Year Ending 2023, 2024. The recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file the City of Hawthorne Housing Successor Agency Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2003, 2024. The vote-
Yeah, that was it, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The vote reflects chairman and agency members voting yes.
I will now close the successor agency meeting and reopen the city council meeting. Elected officials report recommendation. Ms. City Treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Some of my highlights, let's see. I attended the Government Investment Officers Association Conference last, earlier this month. GIL, the GILA is what they're often referred to, recognized me for my award as a certified investment professional. Things to take away from that were the state of the market regard to rates. As I've said previously, the Fed was projecting that rates would hold until September. However, it is looking like we might see rates drop around June. So there is now basically a 76% chance that the rates are going to start dropping come June. Also, another takeaway was, you know, cities taking time to stimulate growth in local communities, supporting and highlighting businesses. That was something that I took away from that. That was a great discussion, something that I know we are already taking strides to do in our city. So it was great to have that discussion amongst peers. Everyone is seeking, you know, local growth, you know, to better impact our local economy. Another, and that was it with regard to the conference, but I did want to highlight Governor Newsom just signed into legislation AB 311. As a mother of two college students, this was good news because it's gonna prevent scholarship displacement. So that was good to see. I was glad to hear about that. I did want to say it was good, oh, they already left. But it was good to see the officers today were out on 120th, set up today at Target with coffee. They were there at the shopping center last week on 120th as well. So it's great to see them on our side of Hawthorne, setting up and giving out coffee and things. I did want to highlight, no one has mentioned it, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I know we have a lot of activities in May within the city already, but it would be nice if we did something to highlight that. And maybe highlight the telehealth ban as well, since they do give mental health services. But thank you for coming out. You all have a good night.
Ms. City Clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. And I wasn't at the last meeting, so I just want to personally thank everyone who came out to the Black History Month celebration. I want to thank Councilwoman Fay Johnson, Mayor Proterm Manning, Councilwoman Reyes English, and Councilmember Montero for your generous donations, which made the event possible. And I'd like to thank the entire council body, including the mayor, for coming out and celebrating. It really meant a lot to have everyone here. Thank you all to the, thank you to the Balboas as well. Sent me a really nice note afterwards. I really appreciated that. Thank you. Just want to congratulate all of the proclamation, people who received proclamations today. And I also want to thank Dolce and the Hawthorne Police Department for all that they're doing to help with the unhoused situation that, you know, we really don't have a lot of control over who becomes unhoused. So also, my condolences to the family, to the Jensen family. And that's pretty much it. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and have a safe evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Fay Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for supporting me on my event this evening, the meet and greet. And thank you to Councilmember English and Montero for setting aside the time to come to the event. And just as a reminder, this event was designed to highlight our businesses and give people an opportunity to meet and greet the resident, I mean, the businesses in our neighborhood. If council is available, they will be out there shaking hands and kissing babies and eating food. So it's dependent upon the schedule. So we give the grace to those who can't come, and we enjoy those who can come. So keep that in mind. We want to thank our vendors, Launchpad. Launchpad is a year-round USDA-approved childcare and preschool, offering nutritious breakfasts and lunches and all forms of payment options for low and free costs to families who qualify. So keep that in mind. And they're locally. And Panamericana has been around a long time. Hector just recently took over the business because his father passed in December. So our condolences to him. And let's help keep the, the reputation of that business going and go support them. They have wonderful desserts. They're a bakery. And I shop there quite often, and it makes me hungry. If I go to Wingstop, I gotta go to Panamericana. So, and then El Boquerón. Who had an opportunity to taste that drink? That was, that's an outstanding drink. That, when I go, I absolutely get that. I know it's gonna destroy my diet, but you know what? It was delicious. So remember to go out and support her business. It's minority female-owned and outstanding El Salvadorian food. So please support them. And also remember that if you're a business in our, in our community and you want to be a part of our mini Taste of Hawthorne, reach out to our City Manager's Office and give them a buzz and give them your name and number, and I'll be able to reach back out to you to set up a time for you to be on the calendar. Thank you to Councilmember English for your proclamation for the Fair Housing Foundation. That's nice that we're able to recognize organizations in our community that's helping our community do better. And then for Councilmember Montero, they, again, Red Cross, they help us, and we appreciate that. And then to Bob Jensen, our condolences go out to him. And again, Von, thank you very much for the efforts that you're putting into the 311 app to try to make us all happy and make the app more useful so that we can actually pull data from it and see what's going on. I love the map. I can see how bad I'm doing in my area. So, but the sidewalk, I'm just curious, because when I walk, I see sidewalks all over the place. And I'm wondering, hmm, you know, if somebody tripped on that, how much is that gonna cost us as a city? So if you want to save some money and want to see our city funds go in the right place, let's not have it go in settlements and lawsuits. Thank you to Chief Tomatomi and all of his team. I know they left already, but thank you very much. And Olivia, thank you very much for bringing those bills to our attention. You know, when I, when I was running for office, one of the things that I said is that, you know, council should be the tip of the spear when it comes to protecting our city from our government in the state, in Sacramento. And if we, if we're not aware of what's going on, how, how's the community gonna be aware to now activate? It's not just a letter from us, it's phone calls from the community that's gonna make the difference. We can put all of our names on one letter. That's one letter that ends up in the trash can. But if you blow up their phones and you let them know, this is not what we want in our community, they're gonna listen because they want to get reelected. So it's, there's power in number, and there's power in information and knowledge. So thank you, Olivia, for that. I appreciate it. And then Von, and maybe this is already in the works, I don't know, but where are we with getting the contracts online? Because I get hit up a lot about that. Why, why can't we, as residents, see the contracts?
I'm currently working with the City Clerk's Office. We're working on a new application to migrate those items over. So it's gonna be some time. If someone wants to see a contract, they can call and do a public records request, and we can provide that right away. So it can be somewhat encumbrant to have to do that, but if a contract wants to be seen or reviewed, we have those contracts. Working with IT, City Clerk to get those online. I'm, I'm estimating maybe six months or so, six months, eight months to get those up and ready.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think one of the challenges is, is not so much that they, they have the right to come and ask for it, do the paperwork and fill it out. Sometimes they don't know what to ask for. And what I see is, they want to know what contracts we do have so that if they want to see it, they can see it. So it's great that we are moving towards that. I think that's what the community wants to hear. So thank you, guys. Thank you. And then, I don't know. I, I'll talk with you guys offline about the sex trafficking here in Hawthorne, because that's, well, that's what one of the gentlemen was saying. So I'm just curious to see if that's being tracked by our police department, if that is an issue, and what are we doing about it? Because that's tragic, if that's what's going on in our community. We need to stop that. With that, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for listening at home. First, I want to say thank you to all the staff, the head departments, you know, outstanding work today and continue to do work for us in the city. I want to thank everybody, especially, you know, the, all the presentation was fantastic from my civic 311 through the, about the mental health relationship with the HPD and the homeless, tiny homes. So thank you for all of that. And the homeless status, thank you. We're going to the right direction. And sometime for business to come to our cities, we have to clean it up first. So and that's what we're doing anyway. And we constantly advertising and asking people to come to our cities. I want to say again, thank you for, actually, let me start with before Ms. Valentine leaves. I want to say thank you for bringing those bills, but I had nine pages of bills that is in Sacramento and what the Cal Series is proposing, support and not support. And I strongly agree with you about the SB 79, SB 677, AB 1061 is another one. So I'm going to give our city attorney a copy of these bills and maybe for us to come up with letters or resolution opposing these bills. So I have nine pages of bills that is going through Sacramento right now, and a lot of them is interfering in our local government to regulate zoning and land use. So we need to be awake and make sure that this doesn't go through. But apparently, I was in a conference two weeks ago in Yosemite, Yosemite. Say it again. You said in the National Park about, it's called Wellness Makers Policy. And according to some of those cities, Senator Winner actually spoke in there a few years back, tried to promote the SB 9. And apparently, half of California support what he's, who's he's proposing. So it's not just, there is like 100% opposition, but there is a divide among cities about what to do with housing, right? But for us, it's bad because, you know, Hawthorne, you know, I tell you, several years ago, it was the most dense populated city in the United States. It was number seven, right? Based on the square footage and the number of population. So for us, because of all these transit-oriented projects that has been created, because of the Olympic, is going to allow more developers trying to say, I can have ministerial approval and pass by Planning Department, Planning Commission, and even us, and do whatever they want based on state laws. So it's a lot of things coming up. So we need to be vigilant on that. So thank you again, Ms. Valentine, but I was already ready to bring it up. I want to say thank you to Mike Perez, he left, and Ms. Kwanabui for helping me set up all the room for Pablo Catano Celebration of Life, who was very successful. Our Congresswoman showed up, and he gave a proclamation from the Congress that Pablo Catano was mentioned on the floor of the House in Washington, DC, as a great community civic leader that passed away in our city. Also, I want to say that I went to another conference that called the ADA City Summit in Torrance, and the highlight of that, of that conference was about sport and entertainment and what's coming into South Bay, right? They're talking about the World Cup, the All-Star Game, the Super Bowl, the Olympics, and trying to convince city leaders to take charge, make sure, yeah, your city is involved, make sure your city is ready to do business because we're gonna have people, make sure you have a specific plan oriented to those particular events that is coming to the South Bay. So all of that, it was ADA City Summer in LA County. So the other thing that, say, I did attend the 911 System Board of Directors meeting. Like I mentioned, you know, some of our dues is going to increase a little bit based on the number of calls for the 911. The South Bay CAG that is very involved with the homeless issue, especially the way the LA County is going to distribute millions of dollars to the, to the, to the area. And also, I did attend the sanitation, this sanitation district 5, that probably 2025, 26, you're gonna see a little bit, 5% increase in your sewage bill. But usually, it comes with your property tax bill, right? You don't see it. But, but it's going to probably about 5% increase in '25, '26, okay? Also, I met at the ADA Summer, a new representative for Hawthorne. She is part of AT&amp;T, and she probably would like to come and say hello. So I don't know if she's gonna come and do a presentation or just come to the public communication time. So, but I'll be more, I'll give more detail, Von, if she wants to come to a presentation through the, in April. Just keep in mind, Mr. May, if you could adjourn this meeting on Larry Bender, right? Larry, Larry Bender passed away last week. So, and he was a long time, you know, employee of City- away last week. So, and he was a long time, you know, employee of City of Hawthorne, the cable. He was the face of our network in the past, mentor for Eric Chavez, and many, many of those who came through our Channel 22. So he passed away last week, and very involved in the community with, you know, the Rotary, and the kids at the school district. So our heart goes through with the family. Don't forget, we've got a lot of things. And I have to tell you, you know, this QR code, I scanned it, in 30 seconds, I was on My Civic 911. When I went 3 seconds. This one, it took me to the city, and then it said, "Report," it took me straight to the My Civic 311. So I didn't even need to look for it. But there is under this QR code, when you say, "Report," you click on it, you go straight to the My Civic 311. Okay? So very fast, very efficient. So thank you again. Thank you, Parks and Rec Commission, for the art. Unfortunately, May 1st, I'm not going to be there, but I will send you some art for my children. And I know Ms. English will talk about Providers Fair, so. But I want to talk also about the Autism Walk, that's going to be on April 26 at Yocallippus Park, from 10 to 1. You can come and walk. If you want to do 5K, you have to do 11 lap of the park. So come and promote the autism, because April is Autism Month. So, and then, no, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and good night, and fantastic newsletter. Did you see this, with all the pictures from the Black History Month? Thank you very much, and God bless.
Councilwoman English?
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Montero. Great information there. Tonight's council meeting was a good one, a productive one. Thank you for Martha with the Fair Housing Organization. She's been our assistance and savior for a long time with regards to constituents calling for services, you know, able to connect and work out their disputes, whether it's a tenant or a landlord. Like she just made mention, she's assisting all parts of housing issues, housing matters. So thank you for the proclamation from all the council, and for her being here. Thank you to the Department of Public Works, Selena Akbar, all the great team out there, all our workforce for this past weekend, community cleanup that we had here in Hawthorne. We had a lot of great participants, especially our youth, our volunteers who are looking for community hours, to make sure to put that on their applications for college and/or apprenticeship programs. So thank you on efforts from the Department of Public Works, from our Community Services Department. Even our police was there, to the chief and his team. Great efforts, great work, and it's something that's very popular. And it's amazing how folks want to contact us after the fact, right? But, you know, we're pushing, and we're doing this quite often. And it's important for us, it's important for them, that we continue to work on keeping Hawthorne looking clean and green. And so I just want to give kudos to all the departments that helped in those efforts. And Councilmember Johnson and I participated, along with Vaughn. And again, thank you for all of that great teamwork. To the American Red Cross, thank you for bringing that. Councilmember Montero, for DJ, bringing our 311 app, great work there. And I'm sure there's going to be other efforts in the 311 app that's going to be added. I just know there are. So, you know, thanks for working on that, on the 311 system here in our city. Again, our condolences to the Jensen family, and thank you for recognizing Councilmember Montero, again, and having the family come out and be acknowledged. And for Historic Society, for all that you're doing, just to continue to preserve and to tell the story of Hawthorne, which we all love. Thank you again to presentation from the police chief with regards to efforts that they're making, along with Telehealth Van. It's good to hear the push that we continue to make. Again, collaboration is important, especially when it comes to delivery of service. So thank you for that. There was also made mention of, you know, providing some, you know, 20-hour week coverage with regards to, you know, addressing the mental health needs and assistance, which, you know, we just don't have the resources, but we're making efforts to address all of that. So I just wanted, again, to express the gratitude and the reporting out from the police department. Yes, SB 9 and 10 has been efforts that we've been addressing for years, for years. And Weiner, you know, as much as folks want to complain, I mean, I just have to give it up to the guy. He has a heavy, heavy agenda of legislation, and I think he's the most active person up there in Sacramento, not, no pun intended. But every time you hear, it's got to be with him doing something, right? But, you know, there's a lot of legislation and things that have been passed, especially, I believe, Proposition 4, that allows for nonprofit organizations and churches to now build on their property, which regards to, you know, economic development. So there's also ADUs that were being built behind our residents, right, to address additional housing. And folks are doing that. It's providing for families to live in one accord on their property. And I've had the opportunity to visit houses that, you know, speak volumes to how important it is to have mom and dad stay close to them, or, you know, family, residents, family coming from out of the country to visit and have a place to stay. I mean, there's a lot of good, and, you know, I don't necessarily want to say bad, but times are changing. You know, I used to talk about how, you know, sometimes we become, you know, a little bit harsh. You know, for a long time, we were a little house on the prairie, you know? We couldn't think outside the box. But our times are growing, and we're pushing, you know, moving forward in the new years that we are in. So let me just congratulate Business Connect for all that you're doing, Kimberly, and all your work, Felice, everybody that's involved in Business Connect. We had a groundbreaking with regards to facade program of the new liquor store. Not new, I say new, because it's going to look new. It's a new facade, right at the corner of El Segundo and Crenshaw. And I'm elated just to know that that was done, the groundbreaking was done, and everyone was there. And I saw pictures, and congratulations to the council and those that participated to see that through. And I look forward to another facade program that's coming soon on Hawthorne Boulevard. And I'll keep that until that happens, exactly. Councilwoman Pablo Catano, what a man he was, and is the first Latino on the Hawthorne City Council, a person that I look high, high and up to. He assisted me in a lot of ways, and folks are not aware of that. And I just want to acknowledge him and thank him for everything that he did, not just for our community, but for Nuestra Latinos, for other Latinos. So thank you for that. Josh, I have to give it to you, to IT Department, for all that you do and your team, you know, up here always looking at our, you know, we're on laptops, you guys. You know, oftentimes, we're not on paper anymore, so it takes a lot of tech. And so Josh stays and makes sure, and his staff stays and makes sure that we have what we need to address that, and so does our city clerk. So I got to give you your props, Josh, for all that you're doing. And I'm going to push that we need more IT help. So if anybody's looking for IT work, please apply with the City of Hawthorne for an IT job. I was aware of Mental Health Awareness Month for May 1st through 31st, if we could bring back Telehealth Van, La Cada, Dulce, St. Margaret's, and service providers around those efforts to acknowledge them here in council. We could do that in the next, not next council, but maybe the last council in May. That would be helpful, to give them their props, too. Larry Bender, I was not aware of that, so that was quite a shock to learn. Larry Bender was a father image to a lot of our teens here in Hawthorne, and did a lot of great work, and participated in a lot of city events. I mean, I can't believe, you know, I just heard that tonight. I can't believe that, because I just see him everywhere, still wanting to help our teens, and, you know, was a great father image to a lot of them. So my condolences to the Bender family and all those friends and colleagues. And you're right, Councilmember Montero, you know, the FIFA Cup, the All-Star Games, the 2028 Olympics, all of that. And I did hear about the meeting that took place in Los Angeles, to see how communities are going to be able to capture that. It's also a lot of money, right? A lot of money. I just want to make sure we have money to continue to build out our three capital projects, which is City Hall, our Public Works Yard, which I had an opportunity to tour. I don't know if you've been over there, Mayor, but toured the Public Works Yard. It's going to be a great, a great building, and our Senior Center. So those are great capital projects to look forward to. Let me just also mention Catalyst, our Hawthorne cannabis business ribbon-cutting ceremony, April 1, April 1st, Tuesday. That's the second cannabis business that's coming to Hawthorne. Look forward to that. That's at 11:00 AM. Great opportunity. Again, Business Connect doing some great efforts to bring business. But again, cannabis and all this has been, that's been going on for almost nearly three, four years. So it's nothing new. It's just coming to fruition. It took that long to get these businesses up and going. The Art Festival, look forward to that. That's, again, Thursday, May 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's going to be at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. All expression of art, crafts, music, and dance. And there's applications. And this is for anybody that wants to apply, right, for our students, schools, yes. Again, our 311 app, great efforts there. And I think we did something similar to this code, QR code for our business cards, right, where you could click on it, and you have our information on how you could get ahold of us. Some of us provide our information, how you could get ahold of us. Some of us don't, too. Anyway, our spring event, Earth Day Service Provider Fair is coming up. That's Saturday, April 12. Thank you to all the bikes that have been donated towards the efforts. I always say 20, 25 bikes, that keeps folks there, right? Because if they have a ticket, they want to make sure they win, so they have to stay. They have to stay. But this has been going on for years, collaboration, Councilmember Montero, leading the efforts. I thank you for that, and your, you know, team with the Community Services Department. It's Earth Day plus Service Provider Fair. And to be honest, that's the 17th Annual Service Provider Fair, and that's something I'm proud of. But let me just conclude and finish real quick. And to you, Dana, thank you again for the February. You did great on that, and along with Councilmember Montero. Can you just also, please, I want to give a directive, Vaughn, if we could just get our assistants with the City Clerk's Office to report out on when there are openings in our commission positions. And that would be great to hear it from our city clerk, and, you know, in reporting out, letting the community know what positions are available and how to apply. That would be great. And then, just lastly, I just want to, you know, I'm very proud of Dulce's presentation that she provided tonight. I'm very proud on how far we've come, and very proud with the connections that we made to address the needs. And that's all we want to do. Again, that's all we want to do. And it's very positive. It's very positive. Look forward to our Service Provider Fair, our Earth Day. And that should do it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just real quick. I'm sorry. I'm going to open up our, let me open up here. I want to open it up for a reason, because I thought this was amazing.
What?
Yeah.
Go ahead, just go ahead.
Councilwoman Johnson, I forgot to thank you, but the idea of meeting greed is excellent. I love it. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Yeah, kudos. So when I opened the fortune cookie, I'm like, wow, how amazing is that? Growth Progress Service 2025, City of Hawthorne, out of our fortune cookie. Isn't that amazing? Yes, thank you, Vaughn, for that. Appreciate that.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to start off by saying that I really, truly appreciate Dulce's, your presentation. I thought it was really thorough, and I definitely loved the idea of the graph, when it showed where we started and where we are as of today. And it shows that what you're doing is working, because the numbers are going down, and the people that you're servicing, the numbers are going up. So it shows that it's actually working. So I appreciate all of the work and the efforts, being able to house our homeless population. And I think, like Councilwoman English said, we can't determine who becomes homeless. And folks, they end up in our city, and we're not turning anybody away. So we can't help that. But I do see that the efforts that we're making is actually working. So everybody that's a part of that, I appreciate that. Also, next year, or no, no, this year, Ms. English, if you don't have anywhere to go for Thanksgiving, you can come to my house. Come spend it with me and my family. I also wanted to address some of the mention by some of the folks during the comment section. Our chief is already aware of the massage parlors, and they're working on that. So I've had calls about the same issue, and I reported it as well. So just, folks know out there, we are on it. We're working on it. So thank you for that. Our department, let me tell you, our police department, they are amazing, and they are on it. And they're always doing innovative things in our city. And even tonight, with them coming up partnering with Telehelp, I mean, that right there is going to make a tremendous difference in our community. So, and my name is Katrina, not Regina. So, so yes, when you call me, I will answer, but only answer to Katrina. Thank you. So the next thing that I wanted to make mention, I had an opportunity this weekend to attend the Crenshaw Village Facade Program, the ribbon cutting. And I want to give kudos to Kimberly Mack, and all of her hard work and staff for, let's give it up for Kimberly. This was a project that she worked really hard on, and you could see the drawings, and it's going to look like an amazing space. And I look forward to our staff being able to do future projects, because we're building up our city. And so it's always great, because that attracts more businesses, as well as more residents, as well as folks that are riding through our city, they get to see that. I also had an opportunity to attend Anointed Feet College and Job Fair, Career Fair this weekend. And it's always great to talk to our young folks and to inspire them about why is it important to go to college? And also, if you decide to go a different way, you can go into trades. But it's always great to see that their desire to go to college is great, and then they could come and work for the city of Hawthorne. So I really had a great time. And if you all have kids or grandkids, take a look at their businesses. They've been here for 10 years on Hawthorne Boulevard. Also, I wanted to make mention that, and I'm really, really, really excited. We had another person that spoke during comments, talking about, we're not bringing businesses to the city of Hawthorne. And I'm happy to announce that we potentially have a business that is coming to replace our Bed Bath Beyond, called Sports Basement. They recently opened up one in Long Beach, but they're going to be coming. They're currently working on getting here. So I'm excited about that. And we'll have a ribbon cutting, and we'll make sure that everybody is aware of that. I also wanted to mention, I had an opportunity, as you know, a couple of months ago, the fire started, and I started a book drive. And so finally, we had an opportunity to start dropping off some of the books. So I, the intern staff, Jose, he drove us out there. We delivered 400 books to Woodrow Wilson Middle School in Pasadena. And that was such an exciting moment for us. And they were so grateful for us dropping off those books. And they sent their love, saying they really truly appreciate the city of Hawthorne. And if anybody is interested, they would love for us to come back out there. And if anybody is interested, they would love for us to come back out there and help them sort some of the items that they receive. But just so you guys know, your council is not only in Hawthorne, but we're in Pasadena as well. So, we'll continue to do drop-offs in other parts of the town as we're still collecting. I think we have about a couple of more hundred books, 300 books left. So, we're also donating some of the books to our kids here in the city of Hawthorne as well. So, we also did another run to Cimarron Elementary. We dropped off about 300 books there as well. So, that was fun. And we're going to be dropping off more books as we get in books, but we'll continue to do that because they appreciate that. And I had two more things that I wanted to mention. Just the, some of the projects that our group, our staff is working on. One particular project that I'm excited about is the remodel of our bathroom. That is still coming and I was successful in being able to get us $750,000 for the remodel of, of our bathroom. And my goal is to continue to try to get money so that we can remodel every single bathroom at our parks in our city. And then lastly, try, I forgot my glasses, so sorry. The last thing I wanted to mention, and I'm sorry that, thank you, Ms. Ben Boy can't be here. I'm always excited to have you at the Women's History Month and I know that you'll be traveling. You, you will be well missed, but we'll connect again on Mother's Day. This weekend for Women's History Month, it's going to be a very informative, impactful event as we celebrate each other and the accomplishments that we've done. It's going to be this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. Make sure you save the date for Mother's Day, May the 10th. And I invite my councilmen, I'm sorry, members to come and, and celebrate with us. Even though it's going to be a bunch of women there, you guys could still come and just, you know, give your regards. I think that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Again, kudos for the 3-1-1 app and the presentation. I'm very excited about that. I know there's an option on there to report any code enforcement violations. The data for that is, is, we need to be just, I'm not careful, but we just need to be really analyze and think about the approach we want to see when it comes to seeing the reports on that. Because sidewalks are easier to report. It's a sidewalk repair that needs to take place, it got done, et cetera, right? Like a tree trimming or whatever request done, you know, it's, it got addressed, right? Graffiti, it got erased. But with code enforcement, we have that option on there, but the thing is that, you know, the resolution, there's a period of time where people are, what you call it, given like a warning for remediation, et cetera, ticket. So, there's, it's just a little bit more layers to that, that we need to make sure that we know how to have the data presented for that. Because if we receive that data and it's not well put together, well not well thought up presentation wise, we might make the wrong conclusions. So, I think we just really need to approach that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I have one, one go back. I just wanted to give kudos to our city manager. And this is just another reason why we are so happy with him. So, I just wanted to mention to you real quick, the city of LA is in a $1 billion deficit. The city of Culver City is a $35 million deficit. The city of Torrance, 1.7 million dollar deficit. And the city of Carson is 4.9 million dollar deficit. Why the city of Hawthorne is at a 2.25 million dollar surplus. So, let's give it to our staff and our, to our staff and our city manager, that we're, we're not suffering like other cities, that we are in a surplus. So, thank you, city manager, Felice, all of the staff. Thank you.
All right, real quick, guys, ladies, make sure you guys have everything lined up while you're speaking the first time.
I can see.
Okay, okay.
Vaughn, is it possible, because I, I do believe that these, these bills are very important and we need to let the city know about the bills that are coming through and what they can do to help either endorse or go against, whichever. Is there a possibility of maybe getting a legislative update spot in the newsletter?
I'll see what I can do with that.
Okay.
Maybe a possibility that we can start some other type of platform. Yeah, let's talk about that, just because that's more information for events, but maybe we can start a different platform and have something on our website or do a different, you know, newsletter quarterly that has those updates as far as Assembly Bills and Senate Bills.
So, if we're talking about pending bills, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Because.
They're in committee right now.
There's, there are thousands of pending bills. Out of that, at the end of the year, there are hundreds of bills that it's passed. So, it's pretty difficult to keep track of all these pending bills and at what stage they're at. So, that's kind of something that I'll, I'll look into and see what we can report on.
Look, okay, so I just.
Okay, thank you.
We need to move forward right now, but we need to be careful what we put out there, okay? Because there's, I could argue that there's other elements of the things that we talked about at the agenda that we need to highlight as well through the, through our social media. So, that's just one element. I mean, are we going to highlight the proclamations and all these other different things, et cetera? I think we just, the minutes that were provided from our city, city clerk's office includes all that. And so, we just need to maybe promote the minutes so that people could look through there. But, because there's just a lot of information that we could bring up to the top. So, I'm open to supporting whatever the rest of the council talks about. That's just my concern though, okay?
Well, I know that Angie had brought this up before, requesting that we.
All right. We need to just move forward, but you guys can bring it up at the next meeting if you want to talk about it, okay? So, yeah, let me finish up my, I have a meeting right now at 9:00 that I got to get to also. And so, the, the local control issue is very important. The cities, unfortunately, I mean, I know I was talking about this Senator Scott Weiner, but the thing is that he has no local experience. He was never a city council member, never on the school board, never spent any time. The guy came from, from New York, you know, New York City, you know, became a lawyer in San, in San Francisco and was lucky that there was an opportunity for him to directly run for supervisor. That's like a big jump, right? From being a lawyer in a crowded, high-density city, being a supervisor, obviously having this large responsibility and then opening, going the next step, a state senator without any local experience. And so, that's what's lacking when these people are making these decisions and these suggestions. They haven't been outside of their metropolis. They haven't seen how, you know, the impacts of the, the density on our city. They haven't really traveled to other cities that are going to be impacted, so they can't, it's, it's, I, I, I think it's very irresponsible that this gentleman keeps coming up with these types of things without really truly determining what the impacts are to communities. If they're trying to do such a thing, I think it should be a function of the, a function, and it needs to be relevant, what the existent, existing density is of the cities that they're trying to push. It can't just be a implementation. Of course, there might be some cities that are advocates of this because they're not as impacted as us. And then they have a newfound transportation corridor that's popping up to their city and, you know, they can afford to do that, but we have, we were the second highest density city in, in LA. I think Maywood and Redondo Beach were up there with us. And in the United States, we were one of the highest, okay? So, we just need to, seventh, okay? So, at one point, we had 16,500 residents to one square mile. 16,500 to one square mile, okay? That's a lot, man. And we just need to be responsible. We just can't keep building. We've already done our due diligence as a city to be able to have provided the housing. It was reckless the way it was approached to, approached back then. And now we're seeing the repercussions. We got property managers over here complaining about things being left in front of their, in front of their, what you call apartments, you know? You got, you have people complaining about like the issues that are happening in certain parts of our city when it comes to some of the dangerous things that happen. And luckily, we have a great police force that keeps that all contained as much as possible. It's just, but it's a whack-a-mole thing too, right? It gets to that point. So, we need to be, we need to push back on that and just pray that this guy just, he goes somewhere else and does his damage. Promote 3-1-1 app, folks. And code enforcement, the lady, the young lady over here came over here talking on behalf of a property management group. The reality is, if somebody wants to do business in the city of Hawthorne, if you want to own an apartment building, you need to do everything you can to keep it as beautiful, as beautiful, as clean as possible. And that also includes people dumping in, in front of your location, whether it's your people, your residents or not, it's your responsibility. So, if somebody drops, drops a bag of trash in front of where, where I live, am I just going to leave it there? No, I'm going to pick it up and make it nice for the, for everybody else. That's something I do on my behalf, okay? But if somebody wants some of these fat cats over here, like in Palos Verdes and the beach areas, Beverly Hills, or wherever they live that own a property here, they need to be able to fork up some money to make sure that their properties are kept clean, just like they do in other areas. And we just can't be just like, be soft on that and just let that slide. Because there's other cities that, that enforce that type of stuff. And, you know, I think we need to talk in those terms. And proof of the fact that we are taking care of business is the fact that the lady mentioned that she's been getting citations for it. That's, to me, that's evidence that it's working and that our coenforcement is taking charge and is citing properly so that these people could be responsible. They're feeding, feeling the heat. And yeah, you need to keep clean. You need to increase your rate so that you can have your people, your management company come pick the stuff up and, or call, call it in or dump it somewhere, or take it to the, whatever, we don't have a city dump, wherever the proper place is to dispose of stuff. So, kudos to our code enforcement. I liked hearing that, actually. That made me real, real happy. It's kind of twisted, but it's true. So, that's it. Let's, let's close out the meeting in honor of Larry Bender. It's unfortunate, I heard about it and there's a lot of sad people that like down cable, downing cables. They're really sad about that and myself and the members of his, he was a member of, which club was he a member? The Rotary Club. So, let's just have a moment of silence for him before we close out the meeting. All right, thank you, guys. Meeting's adjourned at 8:59.